Okay, welcome to this meeting of the Milton Planning Board. This is our seventh meeting of fiscal year 18. We're going to introduce ourselves. I'm Alex Whiteside. I'm the chairman. And on the telephone, you'll find out who's on the telephone.
April Lamro, member.
Julia Getman-Clark.
William Clark, planning director.
Lauren Masser, assistant town planner.
Do you return? Telephone.
Brian Furz, plenty more members.
Benny Swinson.
Phone-ically.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
All right. We're going to be meeting quite a lot on the 16th. Isn't it the 16th?
Yes.
That we're going to do the Master Plan Implementation Committee with the selectmen. Then on the 23rd, isn't it, that the town meeting occurs?
Yes.
And it may go the 23rd and 24th. And I can't imagine the 25th. But if it were to go, it would actually be, after the 24th, it would bump over to our meeting on the 26th. So we're not going to let it go beyond the 24th. We're going to meet on the 26th, and we're going to meet on November 9th. Now, how about the minutes? Can we approve them? We can approve some of them, I hope.
Yeah, I think I see where these are.
All right, we're going to, Julia, if you would remind me a little later in the meeting to do the minutes, we will do them.
I mean, I can move to accept the first three, but we have none.
Well, we can do them all at once. We won't forget the minutes today. Now, Jack, unless you are here for citizens speak, there don't seem to be any citizens.
Jack is here for a 7:15 public hearing.
You don't think he's here for citizens speak?
I know he's not.
All right, well, then, and I don't think our communications team is going to participate. Do you want to? No, they indicate no. All right, no citizens speak today. Maybe we will do the 300 Highland Street A&R plan.
We can approve these now.
Okay, the minutes are ready to go? Have you seen the minutes, April?
Oh, sorry. No, it's okay. I saw some of them.
I just wanted to make sure they were the ones that I reviewed before, and they are.
All right.
I'm set.
Okay.
It was last week, right?
Now, I think at 7:15, we're going to do Woodmere.
Did we review this, too?
And so, right now, we're going to do 300 Highland Street.
Yep.
And Phil, you might as well introduce this topic to us.
300 Highland Street actually has filed for an A&R to subdivide a two-acre parcel off on the side. I'm sorry, it's a one acre. It's 40,207 square feet. It is part of a larger lot that is two acres and another acre on the other side. So the property will have three A&Rs when you sign off on this. At the last meeting, there was a question whether the existing tennis court, and the plan is on the board behind the chairman, the tennis court is not a structure. The question came up was the propane gas fill, the AC units on the concrete pads, the generator on the concrete pad, were any of those considered to be structures? Per the building inspector, none of those are considered structures. There is an accessory cottage on the site right now that will be raised should this plan go into effect. The same plan was once signed by the planning board back in the 1980s. Only the Mylar was lost, and it's basically the same plan from then. But it meets all of the frontage and area requirements.
All right, who did? Does the board have any questions about this, about this plan? Yes?
Do we not have any regulations about configuration of property? It just seems so kind of convoluted to me. And actually, the buildable portion is fairly small, given...
Like it to be triangles, rectangles, parallelograms?
Well, the fact is that only that front portion on Highland is probably buildable for a residence. So it sort of renders the whole, the half of the property sort of not really able, by the time you put in setbacks, to be built on.
But they have a nice backyard, potentially. Or a handful court or something.
Is the dash line the buildable? Is that within setbacks?
That's the setback line, yeah.
There is another lot on the other side of the main property, and there was a smaller house on that lot, and it was up towards the street. The current owner of 300 raised that house 15 years ago, 20 years ago.
So you're absolutely right. It's a gerrymandered lot, and there's nothing we can do about it. It has the necessary frontage and the requisite area. If it, you know, if it, if it, if it had frontage, well, there is a series of cases that say you can't, there are certain types of configurations that are no good, but this isn't one of them. Because the street, basically, the frontage on the street, basically, can serve where the house would be built. So, anyone else? All right, then shall we authorize Mr. Clark to endorse this plan as not requiring subdivision approval?
So moved. I'm sorry, I just had one last, so the frontage is on Highland?
Right.
And those are just house lots around this? Is that right? That's just another house lot on?
House lot here, house lot here, house lot there, there. Yes, those are just other people's property.
And there's no reason to have a sidewalk, because we're familiar with Highland Street. We know it has all the utility.
Well, I mean, the question is, is there frontage? I mean, that's really the question. And this is the frontage.
Okay.
And it's Highland Street, and there is a stone wall there. And whether or not we're going to allow it to be breached if someone wants to build, that's a matter for another day.
Okay.
Because it's a scenic road.
Separate application, separate subject.
Okay.
Yes.
Second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. Now...
Do you want to do the minutes, Alex?
Yes.
So I'll make a motion to approve the planning board minutes from Thursday, September 14th, Thursday, August 10th. And Thursday, August 24th, and the planning board minutes from the sidewalk on Thursday, August 10th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, we approved them anyhow.
Good.
It is good. Excellent.
Moving right along.
Moving right along, we're going to now. I included my zoning packet because there is an issue that some people have raised about temporary signs. As you may recall, the warrant committee said, "Well, we don't think that we want to approve this size limit on temporary signs because we think that the town council should weigh in as to, as to the..." As to whether or not the temporary sign by law is likely to be constitutional. And unfortunately, I brought a copy of the bylaw that is not correct. So, there is a, in the, do we have, can you pull up the temporary sign by law?
Yes. Let me re-just ask that.
Now, we put this out for comment to the various town planners, and they thought that 16 square feet was generous, and that it's significantly more than some towns allow, and that we should have no problem with that. But they did say that they thought that the provided clause, which says, "Provided that for good cause, the town administrator may permit a greater area of length and/or width." And the problem is that the town administrator might decide to pick and choose among the types of signs that he will allow. Like a political sign, he might say, "No, no, 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 you can't have anything bigger than this." But a welcome home from Afghanistan sign, he might say, "Sure, you can have a great big sign." So the town planners suggested that that provided clause may do this particular by-law amendment in, as far as it being legal. And I think that they might be right.
Yeah.
So...
I'd be okay striking that.
It's too bad, because it would be nice to have some flexibility. But this isn't our fault. This is the fault of the United States Supreme Court, saying you can't differentiate on the basis of content. And by just not mentioning content, it does seem to me that the town administrator would consider the content, and that would be a potential undoing of the bylaw. So I think that we should be prepared to, I think that we might tell the warrant committee that of our concern, and that we think that it should be, it should be deleted, unless town council, who has been asked about the size, but we haven't heard back from them, unless town council says he thinks that this is a solid provision, but I don't think he will. So, that gets us to 7:15, and it's time for Woodmere. Introduce, you're being taped.
Good evening. I am Jack Dolly from Northland Residential Corporation, the developer of the Woodmere brushhill project on Brushhill Road, the former St. Hyatt rectory site. Here before you tonight to ask for amendment to the special permit. The special permit contained a clause in it, not contained, contains a clause in it which reads, and I don't have it in front of me, but it reads...
It will be on the board before you know it.
Okay. No, I won't be able to see it, but it reads that each unit shall have a bedroom on the first floor and one or two bedrooms on the second floor. We've had a number of inquiries since we've been marketing over the last, probably 18 months, predominantly from older women who are desirous of a single-level living environment, meaning, obviously, a first-floor master bedroom, which was one of the underlying premises of, on the permitting and zoning of the project, but also a second bedroom that they would most likely use as a den/study on the first floor, and nothing on the second floor. They find that our present floor plans with about 1,726 square feet on the first floor and another six or eight on the second floor is a bit overwhelming of space to furnish, manage, clean, and decorate. And so we started looking at the site, and we determined that Building 7 in the site plan would be a place that we might be able to do that, and we developed a floor plan accordingly that calls for two bedrooms, two two-bedroom units in that location, as is shown on the map. Oop. Fast fingers over here. Building 7 is known as Building 7 because as you enter the site, the buildings are numbered one, in a counterclockwise fashion, one on. And that, sort of, that upper corner there is a two-unit building. You can see how they're sort of shifted against each other. One slid forward and or back from the other to create the duplex. It's a little more compact building from a massing standpoint as it relates to the verticality of it, and would also allow us to provide a more moderate, slightly more moderate price point to that population. The mark of the other units sell anywhere from $9.50 to $1,050. This, given that this would be slightly smaller, we propose to bring this in in the $8.35 to $8.65 range to provide that offering to that population. Has a full foundation, has nothing on the second floor.
Is there a second floor?
There is no second floor. There's no way. It would be a trust roof. There would be, the code requires that we have means to get up there for firefighting reasons, but not living reasons. If they needed extra space, we have one individual that would like a hobby room in the basement. The basement is kind of what we call a daylight basement, meaning it's not walkout to gray, but it has the opportunity to have sort of egress windows that would be waist-high up to the ceiling joist, so they'd be approximately four feet tall by whatever width. They would have to meet egress requirements regardless of whether there was finished space down there or not. So you could create a, you know, if you wanted a family room for the holiday, you know, grandkids to sleep in Baggett, or Thanksgiving, you know, kind of thing. In this person's case, she wants a sewing...
Is there a picture of the buildings?
I don't know if I provided. I do have an elevation. If I can pass around. Kind of doesn't do, given that it's two-dimensional, it doesn't show that the building is, there it is, it doesn't show that the building is stepped back. You can't discern that building, the unit on the right is set back, oh, probably 18 or 19 feet from the building on the front. So it looks very, you know, sort of monolithic, left to right. But there's a significant offset, left unit to right unit. Same architect, same sort of vernacular, color scheme and the like. I guess what Joe Prondak flagged this. We developed the drawing, developed the site plan, submitted for a building application, and to Joe Prondak's credit, he knows, he has the special permit, and he's actually read it. And he said, "Well, how, this doesn't jive with his clause." And he was right. I know, you know, as we were writing the clause, I think our focus was to make sure that we had a first-floor master bedroom in all instances. And that one or two bedrooms on the second floor was a, well, that's where they would go.
While we're taking out that sentence, what are we saying? What is the amendment going to say? Would you put it up again, Lauren?
Aye. We keep going down to aye. Yeah. I think you're just taking out the last sentence. The last sentence reads, "Townhouse units shall each contain a master bedroom on the first floor and one or two bedrooms on the second floor." And I think you're just deleting that last...
We need to delete that, or we can make it unique to this building.
Okay.
What should I ask a question for?
Provided that Building 7 need to have no bedrooms on the second floor?
That's acceptable to me. This is the only instance where I would propose to do this.
Brian would like to speak.
Yes, Brian. Just when you want to speak, yell. Or tell Lauren, and she'll yell.
That's, I think, what just happened. That's perfect. Just a quick question. I just want to make sure that we didn't require this language in the zoning. Did we check that?
I did not.
No, I...
Fair point.
We can check it. Why not put the zoning up? I'm sure that it's not there.
It may be, but I don't...
I don't think, may, it might be.
I don't look.
Yeah, my concern is that we were thinking, you know, over 55 housing, and I'm just concerned we may have thrown it in there.
Well...
Looking it up, I think.
While we're looking, I just update the board. We had 75, well, we had 135 applications for the four affordable units. Only 75 of the 135 actually met the requirements of a legitimate application. Those, there were flaws for various reasons. They had too much income, they were incomplete applications and the like. But 75 qualified applications. Now, the lottery has been conducted, and I think they pulled 12 names out of the hat just to have some contingency names. And we have signed two purchase and sale agreements at present, which would then begin the underwriting process for those specific buyers. They have to go get financing, they have to be recertified before it's binding. But we're in the midst of doing all that with the affordable housing consultant who's really managing it presently. The goal is, the units are ready for occupancy presently, and the goal is, is to have them all occupied by the end of the year. I would say that that's highly dependent upon the applicants actually doing all that they have to do, and then the state recertifying them. So I think that might be a bit of a stretch, but it's in motion. We have not, in my career, seen 135 applications.
That's a lot of applications.
Lot of applications, yeah.
We did, we pulled, we had 50 names for the lottery. We pulled for Milton residents, we pulled for minorities, and then we pulled for the order of the 50 who have, who made the cut. They picked the first four, and then they took the rest of the numbers to add in. Should somebody not make that list in the top, they can replace with the next one down.
Which is likely, in my experience, we've done this before, and it might take six to fill four, or seven to fill four.
No, it happens. I mean, they have to get financing, unless they're pre-approved. What did you find out about the zoning?
I'm looking.
How many have sold, the market rates?
So bear with me, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18 or 19, not including the affordables.
Does that include the existing building? Did that, did those?
No, they moved to a ground-up stick-built. They have a handicap child and, or a handicap adult child, and they need, they wanted, they needed certain provisions that we couldn't, they really wanted to Pete House, they wanted to be on the second floor. We designed it an elevator to get them there, but it, we kept running into roadblocks where it was becoming harder and harder. So I had a conversation, and I said, "Why don't we pick one of the sites where we haven't started with, and we don't have all of these constraints?" And actually, earlier this week, yesterday, I signed the purchase and sale agreement.
Probably would be in the design standards, Bill.
So how many does that leave? What I'm getting to now might be, when do you estimate to be complete? 100% complete.
So 36, if, what did I get up to? 18?
Eighteen.
So it would be 18 minus four, 14 market rates, assuming the four moderate-income units are by and large spoken for.
And how many are under construction now?
Well, after a 60-day process with your building inspector, with four different applications, we, this week, we added two, three, five, under construction now, it's probably eight or nine. I mean, unfortunately, it took us so long to get some building permits this summer for whatever reason. All the foundations will be in this year, and we are, we want to put all the foundations, have all the site work done this year before snow flies, and have the project complete by this time next year. That's our...
Three, three out of the four people are from Milton.
What does the zoning say?
He's working. So the preference that you were looking for on the affordables thus far, looks like it's being achieved.
But this is, this is, we got a communication from town council today saying that the great estate zoning of the Attorney General had asked for additional time, and town council had granted them an extension till the 8th or 9th of November.
30 days.
So you heard that?
I did, yeah.
All right, what does it say, Bill?
There is none, requirements of the dwelling units. They shall not exceed two stories... He shall not exceed two stories. The townhouses shall have a first-floor master bedroom. No townhouse shall have more than three bedrooms. Each townhouse shall have a garage.
Okay. I think that that answers the question.
Thank you for checking.
Good question.
Yes. Alex, is your language that you suggested, would you like that as a motion?
I'd say, provided that Building 7 need have no bedrooms on the second floor. Any thoughts about that? Building 7 is, is the building. And it won't have any bedrooms on the second floor.
Yes.
And this language should accomplish that. So this would be an amendment to the special permit. What is the section that it's going in?
Is it I?
Yes.
Special permit 13.
So it's section, subsection, subsection, what's the subsection?
It's authorized development of buildings.
Oh, it doesn't have a, it's not zoning, it's just. So I guess it's paragraph one. Paragraph one, little i, living area and numbers of bedrooms. So it's adding the following clause to the end of the last sentence in sub-paragraph So it would be, the motion would be to add the following clause to the last sentence of sub-paragraph I, parentheses, living area and numbers of bedrooms. Of paragraph one, authorized development of buildings, that's in parentheses, authorized development of buildings, and then a colon, and then in quotes, provided that Building 7 need have no bedrooms on the second floor. Okay? Here it is. If that's okay.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Well, I just read it.
Can I move back?
A second.
Let me, let me put some arrows.
Can I move what he said?
Well, no, you can, you can, you can. I just, it wasn't going to be easy to read.
Do you want me to read it?
Well, you can try and read it. It's, it's too bad I didn't write it very well.
That's okay. Paragraph one.
No, 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 to add the following, you see, those, those things go down later.
Oh.
I'll read it again. To add the following clause to the last sentence of sub-paragraph I, parentheses, living area and numbers of bedrooms, end parenthesis, of paragraph one, parentheses, authorized development of buildings, end parenthesis, colon, quote, provided that Building 7 need have no bedrooms on the second floor, period, end quote.
Salute.
That's it.
And I give this to Lauren?
Yeah.
Good luck.
But you can use the, you can use the tape, Lauren. Whose is this? Yours? Yours?
No, it's mine. Denny.
Yours.
Okay.
Okay, now, any discussion? We've got plenty of time to have a long discussion, if you'd like to.
We have a vote. You heard a motion in the second. Was there a vote?
All in favor.
Well, no, we have to have a discussion on the motion. I mean.
I'm sorry. We're moving on.
All right, well, if you have to have a discussion, I think it's a fine idea to have two units that are all first floor, all one-floor living, to meet that demographic need. I think it's a great change in the project. How's that discussion?
Well, that, I think, sweeps away whatever opposition there was. I suppose that since this is a public hearing, that we can, I think if we were to vote this change, we would have completed our mission for the evening. So we'd better see if there's anyone here who wants to say anything about, about this proposed change now that you've heard it. Anyone out there in the, I see, I see no one.
Okay.
All right, now, now we can vote. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
It's unanimous. Oh, congratulations.
And happy birthday to your wife.
Thank you.
Is today her birthday?
No, it's actually November 1st when the library meeting is. So I'm going to need to get a piece of paper to record at some point.
Yes.
Since it's a special permit. Thank you. Thank you.
Can Alex sign for the board?
I don't know if they, the, I don't know if the registry will accept that.
Okay.
But you can find out, Ned, if, if I can sign for the board or if we have to do it at our next meeting.
I think.
We can do it at the next meeting.
I'm not in a rush.
Okay, we'll do it at the next meeting.
Then there's a 20-day appeal period. We can sign it at town meeting.
We can sign it at town meeting.
Is that right?
And then there's a, and then there's a P O period.
Okay.
Did you? I did not make that statement yet to continue. Under old business, can we continue 120 Central Avenue to November 9th?
Of course.
Thank you. I have a hearing shortly upstairs on another matter and making a little bit of progress with neighbors and might be able to come back with a plan for a two-unit condominium that would preserve that.
Well, it, it would make sense because I think that the neighbors would be well-served because the, the A&R plan is of, if you get over the frontage issue, which you can, is not a particularly attractive plan for anyone.
I think the preferred plan is to restore the building to its former brand or preserve the appearance of the building from Central Avenue.
Yep.
Best way to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have to consider what we're going to do about the corner of Blue Hill Avenue and Brook Road, where we want to, we want to provide, entice the owners of that property to do something that makes a better statement for people entering Milton. And, what?
The parkway.
The parkway. Blue Hill, parkway, and Brook Road.
Yes.
The home of the Milton Food Mart and a number of other, and, and the one-time KFC Hall and, and a house with a lot of stuff in the yard and a gas station. So.
I believe we did some studies on that site a couple of years ago. Cheryl might be better able to speak to that since she's in the room.
Well, as part of the work that Brian and I did, where we were looking at what could be, potentially be done with the pre-existing non-conforming business uses in residential districts, we did look at that. But I don't remember exactly, Brian, what, what we came up with there, but I could certainly dig into my archives about it, to find out about it.
Some sort of mixed use.
Yeah, I mean, we were definitely looking at mixed use. So really, the question is some kind of equation we were coming up with so that you could look at, you have certain amount of square footage and what your parking ratios are. And so we were tying, tying those together. And I'd be happy for the next meeting to go back and take a look at that if the board would like me to.
Well, I think that that would be a good start. If anyone has a vision of what that corner might look like.
Can I mention something else? I understand that the library trustees are going to study what they could potentially do with the Kidder Building, which is kind of diagonally across the street. And one of the trustees, I met with one of the trustees who asked me my thoughts about it. And one of the things I was thinking is if we do look at this site that Alex just mentioned, whether we should consider that building, that site as well. And it may or may not be something we tie together, but was wondering if it would be something that the board would like to think about.
Well, you know, it's the end product that, the way I see it is this, that you, you have a vision. If someone can have a vision for something that would work at that site and would be friendly to the neighborhood and likely to be supported by the neighbors, then that would be excellent. But if we can't envisage a development that would satisfy those criteria, then we have, I think that we have a problem because why zone for something that we can't conceive of as being good? So.
Hey, Alex, what's motivating this conversation? I'm just curious. I didn't expect.
It's quarter of eight, Brian. We have a hearing continued at 8 o'clock. And there are a number of things we could do. But zoning is, of course, the great, the great filler of time.
Do we have resolution on Beachwood Lane?
Ah, I should, I should announce that Beachwood Lane, the principal spokesman is unable to attend tonight and therefore we are going to continue this matter until our next meeting. Is our next meeting at town meeting? Because I think it would be our next Thursday meeting.
That would be the 26th.
Yeah. The tree is, is old and probably can withstand a few weeks.
Fitting in here.
What?
This is what we're fitting into. This, we already have scheduled.
Yeah, but this is, this is not, it's not a public hearing. We just, we just put it on. We just put it on. So we're going to continue that to the 20.
6th.
But that was a good question, Brian.
Well, if I may say, Brian, it's something that I have bugged Alex about a few times. This is April, because this is my neighborhood. I live on Brook Road and I've been very disgruntled by the condition of this site for quite some time. And I would very much like to see us champion this issue and try to move it forward.
So while we have a few minutes, do you, do either of you, Denny or April, have any thoughts about the Kidder Building and whether we should, if we're going to think about this site that you've talked about, whether we should also think about that property? Do you have any thoughts about that?
I mean, I don't really have any thoughts about it because I hadn't thought about it that way before. But I do feel as though the neighborhood might get a little anxious about that. I know people feel very strongly about the Kidder Library and the building. And I think the neighbors on the parkway in particular were very anxious about the Ice House project last year, a number of folks on the parkway. And I think they might feel as though that's a little bit of a stretch, but I'd be open to talking about it for sure. I think we should.
Well, it is a residentially zoned piece of land, is it not, Bill?
It is.
The library?
Everything is zoned. Everything's underlying goes back to residential.
So I think, I mean, I don't know this for sure, but just my gut instinct is that people would be very uncomfortable with that site moving away from residential uses or some sort of library use. But we should talk about it, especially if the library is taking it on, which I hadn't heard before.
What about municipal use? What do you have? What do you know, Bill, about this?
I don't know anything. I would have asked, could it potentially be used for educational purposes? Because I know that the school department is looking for preschool facilities.
I think that they plan to have a process by which they analyze it and that's, you know, they're just having their conversations about now. So it will be, I'm sure, a very open process for people to weigh in on what they think. But I just thought if we're looking at zoning in this area, you know, whether it would be something we'd consider.
What parking is there?
They have parking in the rear. I don't remember how much.
Parking on the side is parking in the rear. It's not, it's not designed as that. It's designed to have staff parking in the rear and users parking on the street. But the lot is big enough that it could accommodate X amount of parking.
Is that site in use at all now or is it just a closed?
It's leased to a preschool.
Yeah.
And do we know what the, the incentive to change, change it? I mean, preschool is a good thing, isn't it?
I, I know that the schools are looking at an RFP for, looking at preschool facilities. I know nothing more than that. I, I know they're starting it. I haven't seen the document.
Do we, do we think this preschool is going out of business or what?
This is a private one and I think this, the other would be more.
Right. But I, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if they're, they're going to evict the preschool or?
I have no idea.
Okay.
Did you have something?
Yes, I do. At the last meeting of the trustees of the Affordable Housing Trust, there is mention of a desire to seek out sites that would be suitable for affordable housing or perhaps some sort of veteran housing. So when considering redevelopment and zoning of underused parcels, that might be something to keep in mind.
What do you know, Bill, about, speaking of affordable housing, about the, about the status of the town forum and? the status of the Town Farm and whether or not that, there's any thought of using some of those buildings for housing?
I know that Mike Dennehy and I have had conversations with neighbor works in trying to see if they would be interested in rehabbing some of those buildings for, into affordable type, for affordable type use. They haven't, they haven't exactly come forward with a plan. They've come up with a few different ideas. None of the ideas have been discussed with the selectmen at this point. So right now, there is no plan whatsoever for any of the use on that property. We do know that the Pest House will be moved by Pulte once they start their work. There's the potential that the Pest House could be added to that list. We know that Pulte has the potential to take and build or rehab on that site two units. The bad thing about putting affordable to that site is access.
On what site?
On the Town Farm site.
They have that...
Is access.
Well, they have, if they get permission from the trustees.
Correct. But I'm just saying that one of the, one of the, if you put affordable housing there, you're forcing whoever gets affordable housing to have to have a car. So it's not exactly smart growth. So I'm not sure how that fits with...
Well, I mean, there's an awful lot of people are going to need, I mean, the people at Woodmere are going to need cars in the affordable housing there.
Yeah, I think it's a mistake to think that people who would live in affordable housing, all of them don't have cars. And considering that the requirement here on this property, when it was donated in 1700 by Governor Stotan, had to do with providing for the poor, I think there definitely needs to be some consideration for that property having some sort of use in that manner, considering that the majority of the property was sold for market rate.
Well, especially since, you know, if you say that all the affordable housing in town has to be next to the trolley lot, that sort of...
I'm not saying that, but I'm saying that placing them in an area that is transit accessible.
Bureft.
Transit bereft.
Transit bereft.
I also think that there's the potential to use some of the fund's money to work on affordable housing off-site, which may be a better use.
It may be, but you know, those are historical buildings and they're on the National Register and they're falling down. And there has to be a use because they will fall down if they're not put to a use.
People who have looked have said they're getting to the point that they're almost too far.
Right.
Too far gone.
I mean, I suppose the longer you wait, the more you ensure the...
The demise.
I mean, there probably should be a discussion now as to whether to wait, you know, whether benign, or let's not call it benign, rather neglect is the way to solve this problem.
I know some jurisdictions, demolition by neglect is not allowed. And you can say that there's a cost analysis that would show otherwise, the cost doesn't come into play in those jurisdictions. I think it's pretty negligent to let those things fall into a point at which the only reasonable thing is to demolish them.
What is the status of the entryway?
Mike Dennehy and I met with DCR and Pulte at DCR's office last week. The issues there still remain mitigation for the trees, is a, the historic view shed going into the site and going by the site and stormwater. We're waiting for some final comments coming back from DCR. Pulte actually issued comments back to DCR from their initial comments. We're waiting for the second round of comments now.
Is the town offering input? Because if it is, the board probably needs to know what that input is.
The biggest input has to do with what the slope will look like, how the slope will be, will be treed. And the input is coming from DCR's landscape architects. They have posted more questions. They're being answered right now by Pulte. Pulte did have to move some of the storm drain. They had to move some of the catch basins into different areas. DCR asked that the catch basins be moved off of their property back into the town They want to see a document that spells out who has what responsibilities between DCR and the town. And those are the issues we're moving forward with.
And we know that, we know that there is going to have to be an amendment to site plan approval.
It is because of the laws.
Once they work this out, there's a, an issue up on the other end of the site along the detention basin. The original drawings we got showed trees up there between the detention basin and the adjacent landowner. And then somehow these trees got eliminated in further drawings. And I think that, I think that there will be a push to restore them.
For as much as the discussion was to do a cut in that area, it's not a cut, it's actually a fill that will create a burn that goes around so that water can be pumped from the higher, not pumped, it will flow from the higher point into that structure.
Right.
So it's not a cut, so you're not actually losing trees. And their plan is to take and use the existing trees in that space. I do know that I'm meeting with the engineer on-site Monday to discuss those same trees.
Okay. Well, in any event, that's, we're probably going to have to handle that at the, Lauren.
I have some quick updates for the board that may lead us into our hearing at 8:00 PM, not AM, if you'd like to hear them.
Yeah.
So at the last meeting, we discussed some items for improving our permitting and procedure process. So quick things to review. We talked about certified mail. We did find that it is specified in Section 5.10 of the Planning Board Rules and Regulations. And since then, we have been doing our mailings of butter notices via certified mail. We...
For subdivisions.
For subdivisions.
It is for subdivisions, but we will do it, we'll do it for everything. I mean, we've always done it for subdivisions, but we'll do it. I mean, it is in the rules and regs for subdivisions. We might as well be consistent.
We also spoke about automated email feature. I spoke with the IT department. They, it is possible to do. They need to speak with the clerk's office because it would require some administrative burden on their end. The clerk's office is the only office that can post agendas, so they would have to do some additional steps in that process. So, but it is being discussed. We've been paying attention to date stamps for submittals, as was requested by one of the members. And there was discussion about a task force. I did, we discussed meeting Thursdays in between planning board meetings. I did meet individually with the town administrator and the assistant town administrator on the Tuesday following our last planning board meeting to discuss next steps. We talked about meeting that following Thursday. We did attempt to meet with the developers. However, due to such short notice, there are scheduling issues. However, we were able to meet internally with the various departments and the town administrator. And about 333 Brushhill Road, which we have a hearing coming up at 8:00 PM. And we were able to make, I think, what was some progress that we can discuss in a moment. And that's, that's my update for you.
All right. It's now 8:00 PM and we're going to continue the hearing on an application for amended site plan approval at 333 Brushhill Road.
Alex, before we get started, do you mind if I say something briefly? I, at the last meeting, I allowed my frustration over this project to get the better of me. And I feel like I owe an apology to you and to Bill because I got very testy. And I just wanted to make sure I made that clear.
All right. Well, this is, we all try our best and sometimes we get frustrated, whatever. And we will take it from, take it, we'll, we'll take it from there. Or take it from here. Now, I thought I would review a few things as we enter this. As you know, we've got a special permit that's issued to the condo association at 333 Brushhill Road. We have a site plan approval which is issued to, to a developer. Condo Association, as I understand it, sold development rights to Brushhill Mansions LLC. And they secured site plan approval. And in the site plan approval, we said that Brushhill Mansions LLC was the owner and applicant. But it appears that the owner is still the condominium association. And the condominium association as owner has applied for a site plan approval amendment. We have a plan which is in seven sheets, which contains, sheet two is entitled Layout Plan. And as you recall, this sheet, the engineer located a number of trees, significant trees on this sheet. And it appears that at our, one of our earlier meetings, the Ms. McKenna said that the sheet was inaccurate. And I, did we check that? Did, was, did he say that?
He said they were inaccurate in relation to the location of the trees, but they were accurate in relation to the drainage and site.
Okay. So he says that the location of the trees are inaccurately, are inaccurate. And did we speak to the engineer who stamped this plan?
He said that they're right.
Right. So the engineer said they're right. The building inspector, who we have, and why don't you come on up to the table here, has been out to the site with this plan. With this plan. Here's Prondak. Take a look and make sure that that's the plan.
That does appear to be the plan.
Should we give him a microphone?
That does appear to be the plan.
And you might as well introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Joe Prondak, building commissioner.
Okay. And you went out to the site.
I did.
And you looked for these trees.
Correct.
And what did you find?
Well, I found that, that the trees that were marked for preservation, and I'm sorry, I don't have my note on that in front of me.
I do.
Basically, what I did was I went onto the site. I walked the site somewhat methodically in a clockwise motion and I, and with, I believe Mr. Hunt was there and Mr. Nevin. And we located as many of the trees as we could and found that approximately 22 trees from the site that were indicated to be saved. Approximately 22 trees were removed from the site that were indicated to be saved. And of those, at least, I estimated that approximately eight would have had to be removed due to the utility, location and grade change. And that approximately 60 trees remain that were shown on the plan. So there was one significant beech tree that's not shown on this plan, that exists on the site. And that was the biggest inaccuracy I found on this plan. But as far as the trees that are marked to be preserved, I think it's reasonably accurate.
Okay. Now, you can, we'll get to you. So in any event, we've got the developers saying the trees are not, were inaccurately engineered by the engineer who stamped this plan. And one of the, it's stamped by two engineers. Mr. Eaton apparently is dead. But the other engineer is still alive. And you talked to him, Bill, and he, he indicated that the plan was accurate.
Yes. Mr. Eaton was the surveyor.
He was the surveyor?
Correct.
Okay. So it was his survey that the engineer got it? Okay. So then...
May I ask a question of Joe? Joe, so you said approximately 23, 22 trees were removed that were indicated to be saved. And of those, about eight you thought would have had to have gone. So that leaves the 14 remainder, right? And do you have a sense of what, where those were relative to some of the direct of butters who have experienced runoff problems? Were they on the periphery or were they closer to other interior part of the site? Do you have a sense of where they were?
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with the site prior to. And I think there may have been trees that were removed, but they weren't, those were not indicated on the plan as, as to be saved or...
So there were trees that were omitted from the plan as well?
That's an assumption on my part, but I think so.
Okay. You didn't have the information to go on before that?
Correct.
Now, I want to finish. Let me, let me finish here. So in any event, we have that plan. And then in November, we got a, what's called a planting plan dated 11/16/16. And this plan shows a lot of new trees to be planted, but it doesn't show the existing trees. And interestingly, it shows a tree line. And let me show you this. Does it, look around the edges of the new trees.
Yes.
Right here. This line, apparently, it, I mean, this is all woods in back of it, around this line according to this, this plan. But this is not a surveyed plan. And we don't actually know where this line, the line between the development and the existing vegetation is. And therefore, this plan is inadequate because it doesn't show the existing trees and because the, what it says is treed areas may well not be treed. So we're going to, that's why we, we said we need a survey here to, to know where that line is. Where the line between the cleared area and the existing vegetation is.
Right. So, so knowing the site, having walked it several times in, in the recent past, I would say that this line of new trees is somewhere in between the back lot line and wooded areas and... wooded areas and the houses. It would be helpful if a plan had some distances from the foundations, which are fixed points now, to the trees, and that would help us.
But this is not a surveyed plan. But you would agree that a surveyed plan would be helpful, especially with the existing trees located?
Certainly, yeah. An as-built plan showing the existing conditions, and then a landscape architect could then superimpose his or her planting plan on top of that.
All right, that's what we, that's what we, that's what we have. Now, Bill, we, there is a question of tree removal. There were three trees that were going to be removed from, what is her name?
Linda Parslow.
Parslow, Linda Parslow.
Parslow's Law. And as I understand it, the tree company went out there and was refused.
There was an altercation at the gate with the asphalt contractor on that day. The tree company wanted to come in and cut the trees. He got into an argument too. And he just decided that, you know, he wasn't going to do this.
Who was the altercation with?
Scott Sherman.
And the paving company?
And the paving company had the same issue. The police were called for the paving company incident. The police do have a report on the paving company incident.
All right.
The trees are due to come down now, on the 19th of October. I did notify Ms. Parslow about that date. I haven't heard back from her yet.
Okay. Now, and finally, hydroseed, what's the story on that?
I was told that last, no, on Tuesday, the hydroseed company came out to hydroseed the area and were told they didn't have permission to enter the private property.
Okay. So that's...
You can get those particulars from Mr. Nevin, who just walked in.
Okay, well, we'll hear from Mr. Ute now.
So, thank you. My name is David Ute. I'm the attorney for the Mansions at Brush Hill Condominium Trust. I'd just like to maybe ask some questions or to add some commentary to Mr. Prondak's report, which I appreciate. So, I think referring to the seven-sheet plan and sheet two as a plan that's supposed to show only trees that were to be preserved is not, in my read respectfully, consistent with what the special permit from 2014 and what the site plan approval says. In section nine of the site plan approval, paragraph 9 on page 3, it says there should be no clear cutting of other vegetation on the site except the specifically necessary for construction is shown on the plans. And then in the special permit from 2014 on page 5, paragraph 6, says there shall be no clear cutting of lots and the unnecessary destruction of trees and natural features shall be avoided. And dwelling units shall be appropriately landscaped to blend in with the wooded characteristics of the site. An approved landscaping plan shall be part of the site plan approval. So, I think the point that we made through our report from our arborist is, oh, and I just also want to add too, with Mr. McKenna, he gave sworn deposition testimony in this case that I put on page four of our application for amendment to the site plan approval. And he states specifically that every tree that existed at the time, before this project began, was not pinpointed, quote unquote, on that plan. I heard Mr. Prondak say through no fault of his own, he was not familiar with the site before construction began. So through no fault of his own, he does not know what trees were there to begin with. So, at least, I don't think he does. I don't want to speak for him. So what we did was we presented a report from an arborist who looked at the forested areas of the property immediately adjacent to the areas that were deforested by the developer and gauged the number of trees and caliper sizes on the forested area. And then looked at the areas that were completely clear cut and gave a very detailed opinion through a written report that I provided to you in our application for amendment for site plan approval, saying it was not 12 trees or whatever the number was, less than 20 trees that were improperly taken out. It was a massive clear cutting of trees that goes well beyond that. So when the directive is from the planning board to not unnecessarily destroy trees that you don't have to, to construct the lots, and there's a massive clear cutting of trees, well beyond, I mean, the issue with this plan here, it doesn't show the existing trees on site. That was never done. There was never a landscaping plan that showed the before picture. All you have is this picture, which by Mr. McKenna's own admission, for whatever that's worth to you, is inadequate.
Well, I mean, he's not the engineer. He's the developer. The engineer, I mean, we've discussed that the stamp of an engineer is a matter that engineers take seriously. So, I mean, Mr. McKenna may have a reason to say the trees were never there because they're not there now.
Well, did you see, I mean, we've looked at Google Earth pictures that show a completely forested area before, and then a completely deforested area after. And there's about 10 trees.
What we want is a survey. That's what we want. We want a survey. We want to know what area has been cleared.
If I may finish, what I see being kind of said here and set up here and spoken on the public record here is a minimization of what was done in the before picture versus what was actually done. We have an expert opinion that shows that what was, and pictures and testimony that shows what was there beforehand, was more that's shown on sheet two of these plans. So I just want to note for the record that we disagree with the characterization that somehow sheet two is an accurate representation of what was there before this gentleman did any work. It's not. And all the evidence that we provided to you, and none of the testimony tonight confirms that sheet two is there. I think what's being said here is that sheet two somehow shows what was only to be preserved. And I don't think that's consistent with your approvals here. Your special permit and your site plan approval says there should be no unnecessary destruction of trees. And we at least have offered an opinion from an arborist that says there has been unnecessary destruction of trees.
We want to know what's on the site now. That's what we want to know. We want a plan showing what's on the site. We want to know where the edges of the cleared site are. We want the information. We want hard, reliable, surveyed information.
I hear you say that.
Well, you saw interim order. What do you think we were asking for a surveyor for?
So, I think I'm hearing two different things. I hear what you just said, but the meeting commenced with trying to present a picture of what existed beforehand, which we don't know, as representative what's shown on sheet two of this plan. I think that's what I was hearing. If that's what I was, if I'm mistaken about that, I apologize. So I just don't want...
You say that this plan is inaccurate. And you know, Ms. McKenna says it's inaccurate.
There's eight trees here.
Yeah.
There's more than eight trees.
Of course there are, but these are the significant trees that were marked on this plan.
I understand, but so we all then agree.
All right, Mr. Prondak.
If I may, just, Mr. Ute made a comment about clear cutting. As I stated in the prior hearing, the term clear cutting, especially from my point of view without knowing the site, it says no clear cutting, and then I have a plan that shows 60 to 80 trees to be preserved. So why would I think that the other trees were of concern? And why wasn't, I believe that Brush Hill Mansions was part and parcel to the original approval here. Why was this inaccuracy not brought up at the time of approval?
Well, I don't think the applicant, if I may speak to that through the chair, the site plan approval was handled by the developer. He prepared these plans. He got an engineer to submit this to the town. I think there's an inconsistency here that I think we need to look at. And I'm not casting aspersions on Mr. Prondak or anyone. You have a plan here which shows a number of trees on it, okay. But then you have approval documents, the site plan approval, and your special permit from 2014 says, don't clear cut lots, don't destroy trees if you don't need to, preserve all trees unless you need to take them out for construction purposes. It doesn't say, submit a plan with the significant trees and destroy everything else. Doesn't say that.
All right, but we're not a court. We're trying to get this project completed. We want to know what's currently on the site, and we want to approve a landscaping plan. That's what we want to do.
Okay, good. What I was hearing was that some attempt to say something different existed before this started.
What I'm saying is that the engineer says that this is accurate as far as the significant trees are concerned.
What does that mean, significant?
Could I ask a question? I'm sorry, this is a long... I was wondering, Mr. Prondak, if you could tell me, when you walked the site and you looked at the trees, were the trees, the 22 trees, or the trees that you saw, are they in the same location as is on the plan?
Yes.
So they were on the same location?
Specific trees, yes.
And was the caliper the same?
I didn't, I didn't go into that kind of detail. I did not check the caliper. But I could, I mean, there are some trees shown on the site, trees to be preserved, right where the drainage system is going, the big leaching field. I don't see how that leaching field, which was an important part of the drainage, that couldn't be moved. It couldn't go anywhere else. It had to go where the trees were.
And does the leaching field serve both the new units and the existing units?
That's my understanding, that it's the big field of tanks serves the entire site. It's my understanding of the drainage.
The entire development, not just the three homes, the entire development.
So the fact that there was a major clearing there. Okay, now, we have, I've indicated why we feel the landscaping plan is no good. Because it doesn't show the existing trees, and it doesn't show where the existing vegetation ends. And we need to know that before we can have a landscaping plan, a proper landscaping plan done. And we have, in our interim order, we said we would like the developer to get approval of a surveyor, get approval of an engineer to make sure the drainage is properly sized for the current conditions, and get a landscape architect. Once all these professionals approved by the board, and we'll get to work and get this project completed. Starting with the survey, at the same time, the engineer could verify that the drainage was in order, and then the landscape architect could get to work. But notwithstanding our order, no approval was requested for either a surveyor, an engineer, or a landscape architect. And there was talk that we should get on with this. And I have drafted a discussion order which would ask that the developer post $15,000 so that the town can hire these professionals and be able to pay for them. Now, finally, Mr. Prondak, you have a view on who is responsible for the various aspects of this development?
I do.
And what is that view?
My view is that both parties, both the condominiums and Northern Property Management are responsible to achieve compliance here. It says so in the special permit. It says so in the site plan approval. And it properly says so in the special permit because the town has no control over whether or not the developer stays. The special permit initially was issued to the condominium association. And then, within that document, you guys made the site plan approval part of the special permit. So therefore, both parties are equally responsible. It seems, my understanding, that their relationship has not been the best. Yes. It's, when a construction project gets out of control, it's difficult. Any project, it can be difficult to rein back in. And when there's animosity between some of the parties, it makes it even worse. It makes it even more difficult. But I think ultimately, it needs to be recognized that the condominium association is just as responsible as Northern Management to achieve compliance here. Yes.
So if I may speak to that through the chair, the whole basis for our application for an amendment to the site plan approval was because in our estimation, through a due diligence analysis of us paying out of pocket for experts to examine the site already, which, whose reports we presented to you, the developer, who is in sole control of the means and methods to use the development rights to build out this section of the site, had run afoul of what you required. Therefore, to suggest that somehow at this point, the condominium association should bear the financial burden to correct what we believe to be the deficiencies in the developer's work, or at least to do a peer review of it, is, with great respect to Mr. Prondak, who I think is a good person and does a good job, is nonsensical to me. We have come before the board after paying money out of our pocket to do due diligence on the site. We think trees have been clear cut. We've given you an arborist report, very detailed as to why. We don't think the drainage system is functioning properly. We've suggested why that is. Butters have come in and said what this developer has done through their clear cutting and not putting in the drainage right has caused problems to their property. None of this was our doing, the condominium association's doing. 100% of this, the condominium association hasn't touched the site. It's not doing anything to the site. So, the fact of the matter is, this developer stands to profit from his developing these units and selling these units, he purchased the development rights to do just that, to somehow now require the condominium association to pay for the peer review to inspect the developer's deficiencies on site that has run afoul of what your order says. And after two months of him failing to comply with your interim order, and now I see that a lot of things have been happening behind the scenes to somehow present this to you, that my client should somehow bear the financial responsibility for this, at least in part, is, again, respectfully to Mr. Prondak, nonsensical to me. I think we're only here today because the developer has done these things and that they need to be looked at. You guys have all agreed on that on multiple occasions. Your order for him to do this is dated August 16th.
But it has no date.
What?
It has no date of compliance. We think that there's been plenty of time for compliance at this point, but there's no date for compliance in that particular order.
If I may read a section of the order, it says the drainage system is not currently functioning. The lack of an effective functioning drainage system has caused serious stormwater runoff effects on many houses down slope from the development. This is a significant problem needing to be addressed promptly. There is an immediate need for an engineer to review the drainage provisions in light of existing conditions. My sense, I mean, you can carry, it's your order, but that this stuff needed to happen. And I've been in every hearing...
Look, I agree, but it didn't have a specific date. I just point that out here. There was no specific date in it. I thought that the developer would see that it was in the developer's interest to do this properly. It hasn't been done. But we have the developer's lawyer and paving contractor.
You also say in your order that they're supposed to pay. You also say in your order, applicant.
We do indeed. And I, look, I agree that the proposed order that I have drafted says that Brush Hill Mansions LLC should post the money. Mr. Prondak is simply saying that as far as ultimate liability is concerned, his view on ultimate liability is that both parties bear potential liability, yes.
I was just wondering if Mr. Prondak sought town council's opinion, or did you come to this opinion on your own?
I came to this opinion on my own, simply by reading the documents of significant experience in doing that. And that's part of my job, is to make these determinations.
Okay, now, why don't we hear from the developer? And one of the problems we've had for these past many weeks is that we haven't had the... One of the problems we've had for these past many weeks is that we haven't had the, the developer has chosen not to attend many of our meetings, and we've been spinning our wheels as a result. Why don't you introduce yourself? Do we have a microphone?
Is this okay?
Yes.
My name is Daniel Briansky. I represent the developer. I've heard a lot of the colloquy here tonight, and there's something incongruous about this whole situation. And let me just take a couple of minutes to go over the history of this thing. The condo association came to this board on three or four different occasions spanning maybe 10, 15 years, claiming that they were broke, a condominium association is broke, and they wanted the right to be able to sell to a third party, the right to build three units. That came to fruition in 2015, when my client paid almost a million dollars for the right to build three units. He went in there, he, as I see it now, he's the one that has the most at stake financially. He split up a million dollars, and what's happened in the meantime? We talk about delays, we talk about this. There is no question about it, a great animosity between Scott Sherman, who poses himself, and he is a trustee, as the trustee of the condominium association, and my client. I can't explain to you today, because I didn't see, I saw some videos of it, but I never saw the person. But Mr. Nevin is here today, he's the excavator, he's experienced this, where Mr. Sherman comes down almost on a daily basis to abuse verbally and physically the workers who were working there. You talk about there's no hydroseeding. We had a hydroseed guy come onto the property, he got chased off by Mr. Sherman.
Factually incorrect, sir.
Let him speak.
It's, the police have had to have been called on numerous occasions. There's something incongruous about the situation. We pay a million dollars, we're out a million, almost a million dollars, we want to build the three units, we're attempting to build the three units, we want to get in there and get out as quickly as possible, do the job, sell them, and move on. We can't do that. Why's it been delayed? Time and time again, Mr. Sherman comes down almost on a daily basis, and abuses physically and verbally. I can't explain why. But, you know, it doesn't, if I'm a subcontractor, and I'm supposed to come down there and cut trees, or I'm supposed to put in asphalt, or I'm supposed to put in manholes, and I don't need this extra, I don't need any extra aggravation, the job is tough enough, I want to get in there, I want to do the job. When you have somebody overlooking you, not constructively, but destructively, it's difficult to get people to come on the job and do it. We have asked, on about six or seven occasions, from Mr. Uwidi, if we, my client, could sit down with the other trustees, if Mr. Sherman wanted to be present, he could be present. There were five trustees. We want to know, where do we put the mailboxes? What do we do about snow removal? What do we, where are the sprinklers going to go? We don't get the response. The response is verbal abuse, and they refuse to do it. Only Mr. Sherman can listen to you. There's something wrong with this. I mean, it just doesn't make any sense. When we talk about the trees, we have, I heard Mr. Prondak indicate that he walked the site the other day with a gentleman, was it Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Hunt, Mr. Nevin, I believe.
Mr. Hunt, and Mr., and there, you know, Mr. Uwidi says he has a report from a certified arborist, and he does, I've seen it, okay? He'd like you to believe that there were as many, as little as 300 trees were cut down unnecessarily, and as maybe as many as 600. I mean, that's a huge amount of trees in there. Some of the trees, I mean, had to be cut. You got to put a road in, you got to put utilities in, you got to put the three units in. They had to be cut. What we want to do is move forward, we would like to expedite this process as quickly as we can, we'd like the cooperation, we want to cooperate with the board, and we want, we would like the board to help us with Mr. Sherman, who's here this evening, and tell him just, please, stay away. The town has Mr. Prondak, who's very capable of enforcing whatever has to be enforced on behalf of the town. We don't need people looking over our shoulders and yelling at us every day, abusing us, and causing physical altercations.
Okay, we got it. Now, we have a suggestion. Obviously, it's too bad the hydroseeding didn't get done, and we'll hear from Mr. Sherman and Mr. Nevin as to why it didn't get done, because we were very anxious that it get done, and if it doesn't get done, almost immediately, it's going to be useless, and we're going to just have another season of mud. What we suggest, you know, when we did that interim order, I thought it was, we thought it was pretty clear, and we were attempting to do just what you say you want to do, which is to get this project completed. We don't have a landscaping plan for the reasons that I've said to you. What you submitted shows undisturbed vegetation where clearly there's been disturbance, and it doesn't show the existing trees. So we need a new landscaping plan, but first of all, we need a survey. And the board is concerned, the, our site plan approval said the SWPPP, the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, was to make sure that the neighbors got no runoff, and that hasn't occurred. And we want to ensure that the drainage that you've installed is adequate. So, surveyor, engineer, do the drainage, and then finally, a landscape architect. And we have, we have that, the question, you want to continue to use the same engineer, even though Mr. McKenna says that he does plans that are not accurate. And that's of concern to us. We'd like to use, what is the, who is the engineer?
BSC group.
And we have a proposal from them to do the surveying and do the engineering, and we have a proposal from a landscape architect, and we are, to get this thing underway, we're asking that Mr. McKenna post money with the town so we can pay them.
Conceptually, what you say is, makes sense. But if you look at the history of this thing, we're trying to go forward, and we're being held back by Mr. Sherman.
Well, okay, but we're, we need a survey, I mean, you cut down trees.
I hear you, and conceptually, I agree with you. But the frustration on behalf of the developer, he's already laid out a lot of money for the million dollars to acquire this thing, he's already laid out a lot of money to develop it, and now he's being asked to put up even more money, when each step he takes, he's pushed back two steps. He takes one step forward, he's pushed back two steps by Mr. Sherman. That just isn't fair.
I don't know that the board has any authority to control this situation.
Well, you may not, but I hope.
It's either a police matter, or, I don't know, does the building inspector-commissioner have any?
Absolutely not.
And there's, guys, there's two sides to every story. I'm not going to get into the minutia, but there are two sides to every story. I'll just go that far to say this. We have, I respect Mr. Briansky, I've worked with him a lot on this matter, he's a good lawyer and a good man, but there are two sides to every story. We disagree with this characterization, and it's apples and oranges. Doesn't change the fact, the developer cut the trees down, the drainage system is causing runoff, not, the SWPPP is not in effect, and there's runoff onto the other site. This has nothing to do with Mr. Sherman.
But the drainage system apparently is now operational, and we're interested in the effect.
Yeah. As far as sitting down with the developer, what I've told Mr. Briansky, what I'll tell you, one thing he left out from his narrative, his client, over a year ago, sued the condominium association. There's active litigation between the two parties that his client brought. So I've told him, if you want to sit down and discuss settlement or discuss options, fine, let's do it through counsel, but asking for where mailboxes are going to go and all this stuff is premature before you even have occupancy permits. So there's many more things that need to be done. He seems to want to put his energy into knowing where the mailboxes want to go, but not to comply with your order that you issued two months ago. So let's get those things done first, and everything's buttoned up, then we can talk about where mailboxes are going. So I just want to, there's two sides to every story, and these people don't, Mr. Sherman and the developer don't get along, but there are many reasons for that. So again, I think your point is well taken, Mr. Chairman. Let's, pathway forward to deal with what you guys have been talking about for the past two months. We're all ears for that, ready to go.
Well, we, why don't we hear from Mr. Nevin, and then we can hear from Mr. Sherman about the hydroseeding, yes?
Could I just ask, Mr.?
Briansky.
Briansky, thank you. There was a letter that you sent on August 23rd, you might be familiar with it. Do you want to pass it to you?
You can refresh my memory.
Sure, just pass it to me. I was just, I was just trying to understand the thinking behind the letter, because it did come out after a prior planning board meeting, and I didn't know if you had been watching the planning board meetings.
No, I have not.
Okay. Do you want to tell me just the thinking behind the letter?
Well, I think there was an inquiry as to who the professionals were that we had. The arborist that we were intending to retain, I don't know if Mr. McKenna's actually retained him yet, was a gentleman named Richard Hunt, who was, who came to us very highly recommended. The landscape architects was MKA landscape architects, and the survey and engineering was CEC, which is civil engineering. I thought that's what.
So that was a question you were answering?
I was answering the question, what professionals do you have?
And I was just curious, the thinking behind, the people that you CC'd and the people that you didn't CC. I wasn't familiar with that name in the CC.
Glenn Shane happens to be, Glenn Shane is Mr. McKenna's company. That, you don't need to go in the.
That's fine, you need to go, I just didn't know the name.
Yeah, it's, Glenn Shane is Mr., they're interrelated for our purposes here today.
Okay, because I didn't know if this was in response to a request that we had put out there for independent reviewers, independent peer review. Seems as though this is a response to another inquiry.
Can I sit down? I know there was an inquiry, that's why I addressed it, and maybe I misunderstood the inquiry. I thought the inquiry was, who were the professionals that were using, and you wanted to know these three specific areas. And that's, you know, I talked to the client, he gave me the information.
All right.
Okay. If I misunderstood, I apologize.
You may not have misunderstood. I'm just trying to backtrack the process to better, for my better understanding, so.
Can I return this to you?
Sure, please do. And just, so, what I'm trying to get a handle on, you didn't CC the planning board, so maybe the inquiry came from Mr. Prondak, or maybe it came from.
I'm sorry, whom did I, I got to look at it.
It's Joe Prondak.
Okay. That's where I thought the inquiry came from, and I apologize for that.
You don't need to apologize.
No, no, it was coming.
It was one of those, right?
Yes, yeah. Right, I think that's where it may have come from.
That's the interim order running the amended site plan approval.
So he was responding to that?
Yes.
Okay. Did that say independent peer reviewer?
It does.
It does? Okay. And I was just trying to, just trying to understand, so you didn't CC the planning board, you didn't CC the attorney, Uwidi? I just was trying to.
No, I did not see, the only one, I sent it to Mr. Prondak, because I think that's where the inquiry came from, and I CC'd my client.
All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to understand. Thank you.
Okay, let's, Mr. Prondak.
If I could just add one comment, you know, just to speak in general terms relative to any construction project, when there's disputes and when there are plans that conflict, it's quite appropriate and quite common for a board like this to require a third party. And I think that's absolutely inappropriate, the question right now.
Well, we have, we have a draft order which would require, the, let's see if I can.
The only thing I would add while you're looking for the papers, I think you were correct, I think both sides ought to share. I mean, you know, it's, if I had my druthers, I'd say only once I had a share, which would be the condo association, but to be fair, I think both sides ought to be, ought to share.
I mean, your client did say this plan was no good there.
It's right there on top.
Draft.
Oh, there it is, right on top. So we are suggesting that the town hire Halverson Design Partnership as the.
Landscape architect.
As the landscape architect, and BSC group as the engineer and surveyor, and they've submitted proposals to the town, and I suppose that Mr. McKenna could directly engage them, but our current thinking is that we offered that option a long time ago, and, you know, we've had these meetings on the interim order, we assumed that Mr. McKenna would be eager to attend our meetings, but he is, I believe, how many meetings in a row has he failed to attend, even though he's been notified by the town planner each and every time personally that he's wanted?
I can't tell you, I hear you, and I'm not fighting with you. What I'm saying is, the frustration level is at its highest peak. You know, when you have to come to this board, he's not, he's not a professional like a surveyor, he's a developer. He's not, he's not an accountant, he's not a lawyer, he's trying to make a living. He laid out a million dollars, and he steps into a deal where we're now told, before you get the permit, you've got to put in a huge drainage system, not for the three, not for the three units, but for the rest of the property. And the question now comes down to who should pay for that? That's in litigation, there's no question about it. Maybe that's what triggered this whole thing off, okay? You know, we step into a deal, we paid $950,000 specifically for the right to build three units, okay? There was nothing in that agreement that said that we had to build a huge drainage system. McKenna goes down to the planning board and is told, before he pulls any of his plans, he's got to submit new plans to put in this huge drainage system. his plans, he's got to submit new plans to put in this huge drainage system, not for his three units, but for the, for the complaining neighbors and for the rest of the project. Now, if he knew that, he never would have, he never would have paid $950,000. The frustration begins there, okay? It evolves into a lawsuit, which is presently present, presently in existence. We got confronted recently with, with a counterclaim regarding the trees, and on and on and on it goes. So instead of moving forward with a development, he's got to concentrate a lot of his energy and his time on, on this lawsuit. And, you know, I've spoken to my brother, Mr. Udi, about this, and there was a suggestion about mediation, and I never heard back from him. Now, I'm not here to push it one way or the other, but it's very, very frustrating. You know, again, he would like to move on. He's the one who has the most, most at stake here. He's the one that's already laid out the money that's gone. And, and, and all he gets is verbal abuse, he gets-
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt. I'm uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable with the personal allegations.
All right, I'll withdraw it.
I appreciate it.
But that, but I'm trying to give you background, the level of frustration as to why Mr. McKenna does-
Yeah, but it's also defamation.
Fine.
Just very briefly, you know, I'm sorry Mr. McKenna's frustrated. He sued us, and then he clear-cut our site and damaged things according to what we state in this, he knocked down trees, it destroyed a tennis court, and he did, he just destroyed our back gate to the property, like, sorry, he's frustrated. There's two sides to every story. This has nothing, respectfully to my brother, it's nothing to do with the task at hand. Let's get these surveyors retained and do the work and be done.
That's, that's, that's what we want, yes.
I would just like to remind the board and people listening that we heard from a number of abutters about their concerns, how they've had, expressed concerns, had lack of response, and it's related to the construction and how it was managed. And part of this, in terms of what we're looking for with the adequacy of the storm sewer system and the trees, has to do with not only the people who live on this property, but also the direct abutters. And in, in my opinion, it's solely the developer's responsibility to manage that construction site, and the, the way it was managed has led to some of the problems, which is why we're in this position that we're in today. And so I fully support that the 15,000 should be required of the developer as per your draft order.
Okay. Now, let's, let's see if we can, we've got a tree person coming on the 19th, and if the tree person doesn't get in, isn't welcome, we will be very disappointed. Let's talk about hydroseeding. Mr. Nevin, why don't you tell us what your, your take on the hydroseeding is? Bearing in mind, don't, be as polite as you can.
Hydroseeding was supposed to get done on Tuesday. The landscape company went in, and they were told that they were on private property to get out. I don't know who told them that, but they were told to get out on Tuesday, and they left.
Okay.
So.
Mr. Sherman, you can, you can say if you, if you tell the landscape company that.
My name is Scott Sherman. I'm one of the five trustees at Mansions at Brush Hill. On Tuesday, there was no discussion with anyone. I was at a scholastic event for my son, who is in the second grade. I never spoke with anybody on Tuesday, I never did anything on Tuesday. I find it interesting that the allegations are made to me personally, but Mr. Nevin cannot remember who he spoke, who told his guy.
I wasn't even in town, but my landscape was there.
Can I just offer suggestions to make this maybe really easy? Can you guys just let me know when you want to come do hydroseeding, who's going to come do it, and I'll confirm with my client, and we'll get the hydroseeding done? Just do that. Easy peasy.
Sounds good, doesn't it?
Easily said.
All right.
Okay, well, work, tell, get Bill, get a, talk to your hydroseater and see when-
Let me know when you want him to come, who's coming, when they're coming, and we'll schedule it and get it done.
Can I just ask, does additional work have to be done in order to get the hydroseeding done? Is there some final grading that has to be done, or is that-
He's going to hydroseed it, and in the spring, then he's going to landscape it, when this is all settled.
Okay, so the hydroseeding, in some respects, is a temporary measure to stop the-
The runoff.
Just, I just wanted to be clear on the, the point of the hydroseeding at this point.
Right, so the hydroseeding, I mean, the, clearly the landscaping can't occur before the spring, so there's time, but we want to get it underway, and we have a draft order. We, you know, I thought the interim order would do the trick, but it didn't. And so, we'll hear from the board as to what they, what they feel the best way to, that's next step.
I partly agree with Cheryl's prior comments, and I absolutely support the second interim order as drafted.
Brian, I don't know if you heard, that was April.
Yeah, I'm, I did hear. Just processing it all as we go along, but I'm on board with April.
I don't know.
We have a, the Milton Times advertising these units for sale, and we will, we will advise the real estate company that there is this outstanding issue. I mean, if we can't get this, what I, what this, this order, if the money doesn't get posted, we're just going to enter final amended site plan approval, and we're going to put in what we think is reasonable. And if we don't have the professional, the professional advice that we need, we won't have it, but we will still do a final approval, and it will be such that until it gets complied with, the units will not be saleable. It really is, this is not, we're not, we understand your litigation, we just want to get it surveyed, we want to get it landscaped, and we want to make sure the drainage is functioning because the neighbors have had a ton of water roll down the hill into their yards.
Can we ask the development team to respond?
Well, we, give a, give-
Do you need the copy?
I have extra copies.
Oh, great. Can I have one from you?
I might just go with it.
He's got it.
Laura doesn't want this, though.
I have a question on the, the planting plan behind you was one that was prepared for this development in the very beginning, and it's not meant to be just a, after X amount of trees came down. This was their beginning landscape plan. So now that more trees have come down, it was always the concept that they were coming back and redo their plan. How does what Halverson is going to do versus what MKA, MKA was supposed to do on their plan? How did the-
Oh, is it defer?
It's not independent.
I mean, there, Halverson would come in and say, okay, there's more trees cut down, therefore that plan is insufficient. Who's designing the site? You're going to have Halverson redesign the site?
That's what their scope says they're going to do, it says, scope of services, I and D, right?
The plan, um-
I mean, we're talking about a scope of services that's going to get a site, a new landscape plan, it will cost $3,000, and it will be an independent plan, which the board then will be able to have input in, and it's not developed by one or the other of the conflicting parties. And it seems to me, given that we were requiring a landscape plan to be submitted, if we, if the way that we view the best path forward for that now is to go in this direction, it seems to me that this is money very well spent.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. What else?
So, and as we said before, sorry, in order to do a reasonable plan, we need to have the existing condition survey so that we know what the contours are, and that we know whether there's additional landscaping that could be done to help with the abutters who are downstream, down slope, where they have testified or come in and spoken to us about how their landscaping is damaged. They've had sediment come in.
Trees coming down.
Trees coming down, and so that is not contemplated in this landscape plan, and that is something I think that is a reasonable requirement to make of the developer who didn't manage the construction of the site, the site construction properly.
Well, that, we will at some point do a final site plan approval. It doesn't make any sense not to have a survey and not to have a landscaping plan that, in place, because we will write an order and we will record it, and it will, it will not be a useful thing for us to do. We really got to get this done, for everyone's, just for everyone's sake. And, so-
Can I suggest that you set a date for a response to your draft order? If you don't get it, then, then you know it's not coming.
We have a, there is a date.
Got it, I'm sorry, my mistake.
October 19th.
Yes, yeah.
We won't be, we won't, okay, so let's read this, and even though it says draft, we could sign it. If the board were so inclined. So, is the board so inclined, or?
Do you need a motion?
Well, I've made, we need a discussion first.
I am inclined to sign the document.
You're inclined to do it. You're inclined to do it.
And I am inclined to do it.
And Brian, how about you? You haven't seen it, so you can't be here.
I want to do it.
Okay, do you want us to read it to you?
No, he got it in email.
Oh, you got it in the email?
I have it, I read it.
Okay.
What did he say about it?
Said he supports it.
Oh, okay. So, the board, is, did Lauren go to run off a copy without draft on it?
Yes.
Okay. What else?
Bill, you were good enough to send me a picture of the, from Chase Berkeley. I didn't know if you had shared that with Mr. Udi.
I didn't know.
I thought it might be good to share it if you think it's, if you haven't already.
It comes back on the comment that the drainage system was built with no filter fabric. It was, and that, those pictures were taken by the engineering department.
Okay.
Actually shows the filter fabric.
Does it have to be also on top as well?
No.
No?
It was on top.
Okay.
But it doesn't, does it only?
I thought there, my-
Put it in.
I don't have the instructions in front of me, but I recall looking at the Coltech installation instructions, that there had to be also a layer of filter fabric on top.
There is on top.
Okay, so those-
By the time I'm in.
Okay, so, Mr. Nevin says there is a layer on top.
I think I have photographs if you really want to.
Okay, these pictures don't show that. Doesn't mean it didn't happen?
System was signed on.
Well, the nice thing is that we're about to get a picture.
Oh, great.
Would you like to sign on it if there's an update?
Ta-da!
Yeah, so just, just for the record, these pictures show the filter fabric here going underneath, and what we're concerned about is whether there's the layer that goes on top of all this.
Right.
Which is required by Coltech, I believe.
Mr. Nevin says there was such a layer.
It was inspected by Chris, the engineer, before it was backed up.
Inspectors make mistakes sometimes, just want to make sure it's there.
It's on top of the system?
Yeah, those pictures are on top.
It's on top too?
On the bottom.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to see it?
Yeah.
See this, I do.
I, you know, I couldn't believe the building inspector.
This is, so, just for, I can't tell, looking at this picture from, I mean, I don't see why you-
I'll give you another one.
Okay, my opinion doesn't really matter, I mean, I can't tell. Again, I can't tell from this, I'm not saying Mr. Nevin's lying, I don't know, I just-
What do you think, Joe? Does it look like it?
I agree, as I, as I look at it a little more closely, it's no way to say-
It's definitely top.
Yep.
Okay, it's good enough for me.
That's why the engineering department signed off on it.
All right. So, we have a second interim order, and we have a motion that we enter it and vote it.
So I'll make that motion to approve 333 Brush Hill Road, second interim order dated October 12, 2017.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye. Thank you.
So, I think that, that does it. But let's, let's finish signing it.
Hey, Lauren, I'd like to sign that, so maybe I can stop by on Monday and do it.
Okay, we can coordinate that.
Thanks.
Lauren, can you just email me a copy?
Yes.
I have, I have your blue pen.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's a new pen, but it has no ink in it.
Sorry.
Pilot is, you did it anyhow. You got it done, all right.
Lauren?
Oh, she has to get Brian's signature.
All right, we will, you understand the order has been, has been, has been made, but we'll be sending it out Monday after Mr. Furs has signed it. We will dispatch it by electronic means. Okay, anything else on 333 Brush Hill Road? So I will entertain a motion.
So move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Do you have to continue this?
Five.
Oh, we're going to continue the hearing until, until the, until our next Thursday meeting.
All right, so move.
Second.
So what happens next Thursday?
We meet next Thursday.
Next, the 29th.
I'm getting confused. So...
It's the 29th.
You either post or you don't post by next Thursday.
Right, yeah, but I mean, we don't have to come to a hearing.
No, 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 no. You just, you make clear that, you know, you are either in or out. What?
If you're going to do it, it has to be at 8:00.
At 8:00 in the what?
In the 26th.
If you continue this, you're going to continue it to a definitive time, 8:00.
Well, what's wrong with that?
I'm telling you, make sure you say 8:00.
We did it at 8:00 tonight, and we got some stuff done. Sounds like a good time to me.
So what meeting is it?
26th.
26th.
And we hope that, you know, that we'll just next, on the 26th, continue it again, because everything is going so smoothly.
Well, actually, if we went down the list, maybe we get Mr. Sherman to agree to other things, too.
All right, well, this is...
I mean, that's neither here nor there.
This is, exactly. All right, we are, we have the most to adjourn, and it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Continue the public hearing?